Good afternoon, everybody. I call this meeting of the Woodton Town Council to order for a special, for a budget work session. Today's Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. It's 3:00 PM. I hope everybody's had a chance to look at the material. Sherry went to a lot of trouble to put them together. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Anybody see the need for changes?
I move to approve the agenda.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your finger as it goes down there at that end. Okay. And we don't have a consent agenda, so we'll move directly to new business, and the floor is yours.
Okay. Welcome to my favorite part of the year. This is, this will be the first of three scheduled budget workshops that we have for the council. We have a fourth one on our calendar slotted in case there are issues that we need to discuss further and need more time, first week of June, so that one's listed as tentative, and that'll be up to you all whether or not we need the extra time. Today, we're gonna focus on a budget process overview, and I've got a couple of slides in a minute that will go through the overall budget process and what will accumulate into our recommended budget in May. The, we'll talk about a five-year financial forecast and why that's important for the decisions. It'll be before you all a little bit later in the year. And then go into fund balance, how those forecasts and what we think will be money available for project or capital or new program spending will affect the budget decisions you have to make. And then we have on there to discuss the town hall project. You know, that's the next big project on the timeline, and staff have some recommendations and some budget information for you on that. And then lastly, Shannon will have a brief presentation on an update for the community grant program that we started a couple of years ago. So that's what's on the agenda for today.
Excuse me, Ms. Sherry, are there, there was nothing in the packet and no documentation on town hall project. Will that be done? We're gonna head live that.
I've got slides. It has all that information.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, and it's on the slides that are posted on the website.
Oh, okay.
So the fiscal year '25 budget, the, for the new folks, our fiscal year runs from July 1st each year through June 30th of the following year, so we title it at the end of the year. So July 1st of '24 through June 30th of '25 will be the FY '25 budget for Woodfin. Our budget process typically looks something like this. Today, we'll talk about overall forecasts and hopefully paint a picture of what funding is available, what we expect to come in and go out for our core operations over the next few years. In April, we'll focus on talking, laying out a long-term plan for capital improvements that we have slated, things like the park project, any major equipment, streets, and update you on what we see the cost for those kinds of things in April. We'll also talk about major programs, the Blue Way Greenway update. Hopefully, we'll have some, we expect our bids to be back by then for the second round of construction, bids for the, for that project, and we hope to have some updates for that, where we are. We wound up our street project this year that we started a couple of years ago, and Adrian will have some information on that, and then our stormwater update. So we'll update major programs. In May, we'll focus on the town's fee schedule, look at our revenue sources, what we charge for services. We'll talk about park operations as we look at the new parks especially, and what it may take to operate those new parks above the capacity we have today, and then any expansion requests if there are capital needs or staffing requests, pay plan, cost of living. We're a service agency, so a large portion of our budget is salary and benefits, and we'll talk about those kinds of things with the board in May. Then at your regular council meeting in May, we will present the recommended budget. We'll have folded in all the input from the board at these meetings and everything we know from the finance environment in the state and the federal folks to come up with a balanced recommended budget for the board to consider. We'll hold a public hearing in June at your regular meeting, and then you'll vote on the budget after that. Okay, so that's sort of what our budget process looks like for the year. The five-year financial forecast. So some people say, why do we need to do a five-year financial forecast? These are one of the budget tools that especially the Government Finance Association recommends. Their definition of why we want to do this is they say the purpose is to provide a financial forecast to evaluate current and future fiscal conditions to guide policy and programmatic decisions. I like that definition that they put together. It's an important part of the annual budget process that shows, it'll help illustrate what you have available for future needs and decisions that this board will make. We'll go over what will change in the way of revenues and expenses, what we take in and what we expect to pay out over the next five years. And I'll go through a slide that tells you what my, what criteria I use for how much did particular types of expenditures increase over the years. Sometimes we use a historical average. Sometimes we have information from regulatory agencies that tell us what we can expect, or trends depending on what economic forecasts dictate, if it's interest rates or inflation, things like that. So we'll go over all the, all the things used to make up this forecast, so you're clear on where the numbers came from. That's the assumptions that I was just referencing. And then when will operational changes be required from Blue Way Greenway and Stormwater? Some of that's factored in if it was information that I had, but we'll go over how that affects this forecast. In your packet, you received a line item detail of every line, and I showed our actual history from 2020 through what's projected in that last light blue column for every single line of the budget and the attachments you were given with the agenda. It's, this slide summarizes those numbers. So ad valorem taxes, for example, we project will come in at about $4.2 million this year, and then so on down the line. So did anybody have any questions about any of the, the way that it's formatted? Sure.
The stormwater expenditures line?
Yeah, so this year, starting in July, we folded stormwater out of the general fund and moved it to its own self-supporting.
So it doesn't live here anymore?
So yeah, last year was the only year we had stormwater costs in the general fund. That was our startup year for stormwater. We were ramping up. It wasn't a full year of expenditures, but that $190,000 that you see there under the 2023 actuals went to its own self-supporting fund. So in theory, the fees we collect will support any of the stormwater needs and staff required to run that program as we move forward. So it won't have an impact on the general fund. Now, today, we specifically are focusing on the general fund. We have a couple of capital project funds, as you know, the parks and the streets, and then we have a separate fund for stormwater, and we'll talk about those a couple of months down the road independently. Most of our, 99% of our operations are on, in the general fund. Mira, did you have a question?
I did, but it's on your next slide where you mentioned here a 3% increase in future years on property taxes.
I don't know why this phases.
And in the next box, it says 3% increase only. Does that mean something?
No, until I put this in presentation mode, it didn't do this, but I'm just gonna go ahead and fill in the whole slide. So these are the assumptions that I use to generate the forecast that made up the numbers on the previous slide. And then, once I go through each of the revenue categories, we'll go back and look at the totals again. But property taxes, I projected to increase 3% a year, and that's a conservative estimate. We had property taxes over the last four years from '20 to '21. They increased like 28% from '21 to '22, 4.42%. They were kind of all over the place, you know, development affects those numbers, revaluation affects those numbers. Home sales, if there's a high volume of home sales and once a property sells, the tax collector assesses it closer to the sales price, which is generally higher. That affects those numbers. So a lot of moving pieces go into the tax numbers. The tax report that I, that I put on the consent agenda for the board to look at every month, you'll sometimes notice the numbers vary a little bit, and that's, that's just the true nature that it's never a set number at a certain time of the year and it stays that number. It just depends on what's going on in our environment, and sales of property or, you know, some house might burn down and it's taken off the roll, or hopefully not, but it happens, and all sorts of different things that affect the numbers every month. But in general, conservatively, I projected about a 3% increase. If you take the last five year, or the last four years and average it out, we've averaged about a 9.53 increase over the last four years. 2023 to '24 was only 3.35%, and the year before that was at 4.79. So we couldn't really estimate it at like a 9% because it just wouldn't be a number that we would likely hit the following year. So that's property taxes. New development also, I didn't talk a lot about that, but we've had a lot of new development over the last five years in Woodfin, and that also, you know, every time there's a development that has 20 or 50 or 100 homes, that'll affect the base and, and our revenue. Sales and use tax has been incredible over the last five years. I put the percentages in there at the top of the second column, just as food for thought. The year after COVID hit, '21, I don't know whether it was all the stimulus money that was in the economy, or we just truly grew that much over those years. But a 32% increase that year in sales tax was tremendous. Those of you that were here, we, we had about a $600,000 over what we'd budgeted in revenue that year, so that was tremendous. You can't expect that to continue. If you'll look at the last year, this fiscal year, we're projecting only a 2.5%, 2.6% increase, so yes.
Can I ask, as a new person, how does sales tax work? That is, is it, is it sent to the capital and then portioned back to Woodfin?
Yeah, there are a number of components of sales tax. There's local taxes and county, state tax components of that. But in, in general, all the sales tax, when you buy goods or pay for services, anything that's taxable, that gets remitted to the state, and then the state apportioned it back to the various jurisdictions, and there's a formula. Some of it's based on population or, or other, yeah, exactly.
Or which?
Ad valorem, so there's two models. You can break up your sales tax based on the population in this municipality or the ad valorem, and in Buncombe County, you distribute it based on ad valorem.
So that's a local selection of model, not, not state?
Yeah, the county.
The county decides.
On which, which method to do.
That money, that money comes to us each, each, on a monthly basis from the state. We also have a small, not small, but a lesser portion of that revenue stream. The town pays sales tax on goods purchased in the normal operation of the business we do, but we, we put all that in a receivable account, and at the end of the year, we file a refund request, and we get most of that money back. We got about $80,000 or $90,000 back last year.
Phil, I'd asked Sherry several months ago to, for a layman's term, draw me a flow chart of $100 in sales tax. It's so convoluted, I ask her to stop. It's, it's, maybe that's the way it is in every state, but there is no simple answer to that question. It's absurd.
Tell me.
That's real.
There's a great blog post the School of Government put out on that issue, and explains the different components of sales tax and how the distribution calculations are made. I sent that to Jim, and I'll be happy to forward it to you if you'd like to read it.
You don't want it. If you're a professor, you might understand it.
Yeah, but I'm not an economics professor.
Thank you.
So, sales tax, like I said, it's, a lot of people are in trouble over sales tax this year. The estimates were too high because we had had such a windfall in the previous three years, and economic projections were a little all over the place this time last year when most budgets were set. We thankfully were a little more conservative than most, and we're gonna hit right at, barring any kind of major unforeseen, everybody stays home and doesn't spend any money situation between now and June, we'll be right on budget for sales tax. The economic outlook affects those kinds of projections, and at this point, it's kind of uncertain. I went to a luncheon with our trust, the North Carolina Capital Management Trust folks, and they have some great economists on their, their staff, and they were talking about economic projections, especially for the state, and they said most folks are starting to develop a consensus that toward the end of next year, we'll go, the country will go into not a drastic recession, but a less drastic recession situation. They think it will not be as impactful on North Carolina because we're in such a growth pattern, and people are wanting to move to the state, but it will, in fact, it will impact our budget, interest rates, inflation, and all that. So for that reason, we try to budget pretty conservatively on the things that are affected more by the economic situation, like sales tax. And that's our second largest revenue source, so have to be careful with that. I put a 3% annual increase in future years in the projection for the next five years for, for sales tax. Another income source, our rental income, you know, we have historically rented out the community center, our park shelters, we opened up the two new shelters last year with Silverline, so we've had healthy use of all those facilities and continue to do so. Zoning fees remain strong. They've increased slightly year over year, every year, and that was outlined in the line item printout that I sent you all. Other revenue sources are our Powell bill funds that come from the state to support. That's restricted for street construction uses. The ABC Board, this probably hasn't been reported to the board yet, we just got wind of it last week, voted to increase our quarterly contribution to $25,000 moving forward.
What's the nutshell version of how that change came to, came to be? I know we were talking about making that request, but how did that shake out?
Their board just decided to do it. We didn't get.
I think they understood that we were expecting, you know, a higher distribution based on.
Their cash on hand.
Yeah, and what we had agreed to in the past, and what, you know, recognizing too that they also maintain a healthy fund balance, and so now, now that they have the fund balance where it needs to be, they should be distributing that to us.
So it's gone up from 15,000 to 25,000.
Yes, and that's what we'll include in the, that's what I put in the projections, and we'll put that in there.
Change can be good. And this is a quarterly contribution to?
To the town from the ABC Board.
So from the sales liquor?
Yes.
Our ABC Board only has the one store. Some towns like Asheville have many, so we just have the one store.
Yeah, state statute creates a range of, their fund ba, fund balance or retained earnings, if you're more familiar with business accounting terminology. And within that range, they have to, once they get over that range, they have to contribute all proceeds to us. But as long as they're within that working capital range set by the state, and it's pretty broad, they get to determine what the amount of the contribution is that goes to the town. But that has gone up $10,000, so I'm excited about that. And then, other minor revenue sources were an average, historical average of the last four years. And that's how we, that's basically the assumption you use to make up the forecast that we'll talk about today. Our major sources of funds, you can see over the last five years that they have kind of gradually gone up. Property tax, of course, in the blue is our, by far, largest revenue stream. Sales tax behind that in the red, and then our utilities, file bill, and permit fees are lesser sources. But by far, property taxes fund the majority of our operations.
And what are Powell bill funds?
Powell bills are the funds that the state.
Gas tax.
From the gas tax for road construction. Property tax, digging into that a little deeper, this just sort of illustrates the blue and the, the dollars over to the right represent what we have collected and expect to collect in 2024 in the way of property tax revenue. Our valuation has gone up, the red line, in a similar manner. And you can see the, the property tax revenue and then the valuation at the bottom. I'm sure you're, you all aware, I've probably put this on a slide before. Woodfin's tax rate's been 33 cents for the last five years. It was 28 cents before that. So we've been pretty, able to be pretty consistent about the tax rate for our residents. It's important to kind of judge what you're doing based on your peers. So the folks closest to us, these are the tax rates that each of those, you know, everybody in Woodfin also pays county tax, which was 49.8 cents this year. A good many of us also pay a fire district tax and some school district taxes, so it gets up to about 99 cents for most residences in Woodfin. Montreat was at 43, and so on down the list. You'll see Woodfin is second to the bottom at 33, and then Black Mountain was below us at 32.1 cents per $100. Today, based on the valuation on our last tax report, we generate about $122,000 for every penny we increase the sales tax rate on an annual basis. Sales tax, as I mentioned before, is our second largest revenue source, and this graph just shows where sales tax has been over the last five years. The red line on the bottom was the 2019 level. It doesn't rain, it doesn't stay completely linear over the year. We have some higher months and some lower months, but basically, you'll see that it follows a pretty similar pattern each year, so. That dark blue line at the top represents what we've collected so far in 2024. So we're a little above the yellow line below it for '23, but not a lot, like we've been in some of the other years where you see a much broader increase.
That tax rate set at the state level?
Yes. State and county, there's a county component of it too, but.
So almost no springtime seasonal variation, but wow, no holiday variation. Is that built into this already?
Well, that's exactly what we collect.
In terms of collection, okay. Collection could lag, okay.
You'll see the months across the bottom, and I do it on a fiscal year basis, so that's from July each year through the end of the fiscal year in June.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the December is right in the middle. You know, it goes up a good bit in June. I guess all the vacationers and kids are out of school, and people usually take their family vacations in the summer.
We don't have Christmas here.
Exactly. Hey, on the expenditures, there were also assumptions made to, I'm just gonna go ahead and populate this. I thought I took this out, but I didn't. The phase is.
Taxes, Ms. Brooke, I guess.
Salary and benefits, because we're a service organization, I think I mentioned that previously, are by far our largest expenditure on, on the cash going outside. I estimated, for, for analysis purposes, a 3% annual cost of living increase. Previous years, it's been a good bit higher. This December, the CPI was 3.4%. And it, it looks like the inflation's starting to calm down some now, and the numbers for January, February were one point something, so I think it's gonna stay at around 3% or so for the next few years. So hopefully, we don't see any more of the 6% to 8% years that we had in the last three or four years. In 2025, I didn't factor in any increase in health benefit costs. That's usually one of our larger expenditures for benefits. We, the reason for that is that we switched to the League of Municipalities Health Program this past December. Our renewal every year was in December. That program requires that you go on a fiscal year basis, which is June through July every year. So we're, we're going through a short benefit year this year. Our policy's renewed in December. They agreed if we moved over to the league to hold those rates steady for the second year. So in July, we'll see no increase in health benefits for our employees. It was a decent reduction, if you'll recall those discussions last December, in what we paid Blue Cross and Blue Shield, so you'll see a little bit of a decrease in health benefit costs this year.
Is that just because of the legal pool for the league?
It's a nonprofit pool, so there's no profit component. They rate the whole group, all the participants in the league as one group, so there's some favorable analysis there, but mainly because it's, it's a nonprofit situation.
Have you ever surveyed employees on satisfaction with the health insurance program?
The ones that I've talked to since we switched have been ecstatic, mainly because if they have family members that use prescription drugs, the prescription drug cost went way down. Ricky will testify. Very similar benefits to what the policy allowed under Blue Cross and Blue Shield, but the prescription drug, we were able to reduce the cost for hospital visits, urgent care. Most of the urgent cares, as long as it's not one owned by the hospital, you pay your fam, your primary care doctor co-pay, which is a lot, it was $75, I think, under Blue Cross, and it's like, what's our primary care doctor visit co-pay? Ricky, 20 bucks?
Again, 30.
Thirty dollars. It's just 30 dollars.
Then it's doubly good. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so just using the policy was a lot cheaper. We've also started the last few years offering employees a health savings account, and we have about a third of the staff participating in the FSA now, where you can set aside a certain portion, up to almost $3,000 a year, tax-free to use for medical expenses. So that, we, we expect to be, to hold steady over the next year. I factored in a 0.75% increase in retirement costs, and today, mid-afternoon, the numbers came out from the state on our retirement, and it, and they went up a percent for law enforcement, and about 2/3 of a percent for general employees' pension costs next year. And that'll have about an $18,000 impact next year on our bottom line, which was not included in this forecast, so we'll have to keep that in mind as we move forward. The budget numbers that, when we, when we, after this meeting, the budget numbers you, what we talk about will be what we actually are including in the budget next year, and it'll include that information. I've already got it in there. Vehicles and equipment, the police department switched to a lease program about five years ago. We currently have 17 leased vehicles, will have by the end of this fiscal year. There are some that are being outfitted now. The older, the system until this year that we had to buy fleet vehicles under, you order them in the early fall, and they may come in that fiscal year. We've been waiting about a year and a half since the chip crisis after COVID, and that delivery has, has sped up a good bit. But it's, it's always very uncertain as to when we're gonna actually receive vehicles we order or plan for each year. But this year, we'll end up with 17 leased vehicles. Patrol cars are purchased, most of the time at the end of the lease for the salvage value. A lot of that depends on mileage, the condition of the vehicle, whether or not. the chief thought is it above or below what the lease says is the salvage value. But in theory, that is the plan to purchase those. If we don't purchase it, we'll sell them on gov deals, and the money will go back into the lease program for cars that are will be purchased the following fiscal year. We've, the assumptions for fuel and maintenance costs, I I increased police department by three percent, mainly because they have a newer fleet, and we should not expect as many repair costs as we have in previous years when we had cars that were ten or twelve or fourteen years old. Five percent maintenance and and fuel costs in Public Works and Sanitation. Those larger trucks get used every single day, and then we tend to have things break and have to be repaired. So a little bit more of an increase there. Other town services, the, for the purposes of this analysis, street maintenance cost. Since we just completed the large capital project, we're capped at the Powell bill amount. We we brought in about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Powell bill funds this year, and you'll see that number the same all the way across the analysis. A projected five percent increase in the tipping fees for the landfill. Phil, our volume for the landfill, we went to the new large carts, went down about eight percent year over year, mainly because we had customers that had twenty little garbage cans out, and we would just pick them up. Now they're limited to the one town, or if they pay for a second one, we'll pick that up. But our our volume's gone down about eight percent, even with some of the new development that has come online since the initiation of that program. So recycling kind of has gone the other way. There's been a twenty-four percent increase in costs. You know, everybody got a new yellow cart. We pay a little bit more per household because we are not picking up the the small crate that we had before. They have a ninety-five gallon cart, and we're hoping that that helps the community as a whole be a better steward for the environment. And we knew it would cost a little more, but we we're gonna have to move that in that direction for the future. So those costs in in this analysis went up some.
Do you think that the decrease in garbage costs has to do with people having room to put things in their garbage can? Their recycling can, and they're not putting it in their garbage can now?
I I think that definitely contributes that to that. You know, some of the things that would have historically gone in the garbage can are going in the recycling, which is a really good thing.
Yeah, because they just have more room.
Yeah. And the other thing is, we had small commercial folks and and families that had multiple families sharing a home that had a lot of trash use that we don't allow anymore. So.
Where do you think that trash is going?
Well, they're they're taking it to the landfill themselves or to the, you know, there's some substations around where they can drop it off.
There were some commercial developments also that the town had been picking up that we shouldn't have been, and so they would have switched to a commercial.
Got it.
Yeah. Debt service, we'll talk about in detail towards the end of my presentation. We will go over all the current debt service and look at the amortization plan for each of those. The Blue Way, Green Way, a year and a half ago, we sold our second series of bonds for that project. We had the the financing for the street program. All that is fully online now and and in the budget, depending on what the required debt service is for each of those items each year. Reynolds Village, the tax increment financing that was approved by this board back in two thousand eight is still on the books until twenty thirty-seven. I've got a slide that details those costs for the town. Basically, with with that, we, in theory, when it it went before the board, the property value of the development in that area was supposed to support the debt service. It doesn't fully support it, it's getting closer to that each year, but it just depends on a number of factors, and I'll go over into that in more detail as we move forward. I will tell you, however, last year, we had three hundred and two thousand dollars in tax revenue that we remitted back to the county to support our portion of that debt service. And in in twenty twenty-five, we expect that to go up to about three hundred and fifty thousand. So it's edging up a little bit each year. Public Works, the Taylor Street property, we financed a portion of the purchase of that property, and we've only got a couple more years to pay on that. So in twenty twenty-six, that'll be off the books. The sanitation, the new sanitation trucks we purchased last year will be paid off. That was a five-year amortization, so they'll be paid off in twenty twenty-seven. And then the street project was fifteen-year debt, and we started that in twenty-three, so.
What was the Taylor Street project?
That's our Public Works location.
What's what's that?
And if you haven't, if you're on council and you haven't been to Public Works, arrange yourself a visit. Early one morning, take them donuts, meet the staff, see what they do. It's a, it'd be good, good, good exercise.
They would love that. Other expenditures, more minor expenditures, we factored in a ten percent annual increase in liability and property insurance. Number of factors go into that, but in a nutshell, that's what we sort of expect. Had a five percent increase last year, and hopefully, that'll cap off. But conservatively, we included ten percent increase in that year over year. We'll talk more about the community grant program and the costs involved, what we have budgeted for that. We we have about eighty-three thousand dollars in the budget this year, and for this analysis, I held that steady for future years. That'll be solely up to the board to decide if you want to continue that or not, but that's what's in this analysis. We mentioned before, Stormwater has moved to a separate fund, so it's not part of these calculations anymore. And it'll have its own own budget that'll come before you in addition to setting the rate for Stormwater for the next fiscal year when we make the presentation in May. And then fuel and utilities, five percent with a three percent annual increase in most other smaller costs, like uniforms or other fees that we have to pay. Those were the the assumptions used to come up with these projections. The general fund expenditures overall have gone up in a similar manner to revenue. When we do the budget, it's balanced, but then, you know, we we try to be as good a steward as we can of the taxpayers' money. And and this year, luckily, you'll remember, we budgeted about one point five million dollars of our fund balance we appropriated with this budget. And if if we are able to come in the way it's currently projected, we won't have to spend any of that. So revenues don't always end up exactly where expenditures are. We budgeted eight million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and our projection for this year is seven point two million. So we're saving three hundred thousand that we'd put in for the town hall capital project, thinking that we'd be ready to move forward with the design phase at the end of this year. We have about a hundred and fifty thousand, and we had we had budgeted for the two appeals we thought we would have to spend some major money on with in planning and zoning this year. And those have been delayed. And we had some staff savings with unfilled position, those kind of things. It all contributed to a little bit better bottom line than we had originally budgeted. Salary and wages, you know, we, I keep going back to we're a service agency, so about eighty percent of what we spend is salary and benefits. The personnel policy says that the board will approve up to, a COLA up to the amount of the CPIW each year. That's the same, there are a number of indexes that predict the CPI and and all that. This is the one that the Social Security Agency uses. This is the one the county uses. This is the most regularly used index. As of December of last year, and that's our measurement time, it was three point four percent. So I was really thankful not to see another six or eight percent. But three point four percent is what I've included in this projection, and then three percent for the years after twenty twenty-five. This is how those calculations kind of map out. Gas is another thing that affects our fuel costs directly, but also indirectly affects a lot of the other expenses that we have. AAA says that prices are gonna stay pretty flat over the next year. Currently, in Asheville, and this was as of the first of, last Thursday or Friday, whenever March first was, the mid-price for gas in the Asheville area was about three fifty. Regular was about three point one, three twenty. Kiplinger says that we, there's, there'll be some increase over for gas over the next year, but it's not as dire. And then the the federal government, the U.S. Energy Information Association, had the chart that I included on the bottom of that graph. So we look at those kinds of things when we're when we're projecting what we're gonna, the needs for the town, for gas especially, but some of the other things that are also affected by fuel costs. So we're back to this five-year forecast. So using all the assumptions that we talked about today, we 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 plugged the numbers in, and the total revenues projected for twenty twenty-five, next fiscal year, were seven point six million. Expenditures, and and these are just our core expenditures. It doesn't include any new programs, new employees, new needs for capital items or equipment. These are just to cover our basic operations, seven point two. And that gives us three hundred and forty-four thousand dollar revenue over expenses is what we can conservatively expect over next year unless there are some major changes in our environment. And you'll see that bottom line number carries forty each year between three fifty and three sixty. That's what, that's what goes directly into your fund balance, what you can use to fund programs or equipment or any of the other needs of the town. And speaking of fund balance, that's the next, yes, sir?
On that previous slide, so bottom total expenditures, on the right-hand side, the projections have a, you know, fairly modest progression upward. On the left-hand side, you have swings. And, you know, I could obviously spend some time going through all these numbers, but I thought you might have some general guidance on the
Sure.
Swings.
The history. The biggest factor that affected budget year twenty-two, and you'll see a a little over a million dollar increase, was the
Right.
ARPA money. We we were, the town received almost two million dollars in federal grant dollars to support town operations. So that had a factor, and then and then just overall growth. You know, five years ago, and a lot of these, those are personnel expenses, not three million dollars worth, but some personnel, but three years ago, or more than four or five years ago, we had a town manager that was also responsible for planning and zoning. He was responsible for finance. He was responsible for a lot of the things that we, as as the town has grown, became impossible for one person to manage. So now we have a professional manager, we have a finance director, which we didn't have until three years ago. We have a planning and zoning director, which we didn't have until two years ago, two and a half years ago. We have a project manager and some additional staff, three or four different staff members have been added to police over the years.
Professionalizing a staff, additional staff, and that I understand, and the recovery money came in in, what, twenty twenty-two or?
Yes.
It's split for two years, wasn't it? Did we get half in one year, half in the other?
We we did. Yes, you're right. Actually, twenty-one and twenty, twenty-two and twenty-three.
That makes sense.
May of twenty-two and then June of twenty-three, I believe, is the way that went. Might have been the year before, but we the rules for that money, that pot of money evolved over the subsequent year, and the end result is the town, because we received less than ten million dollars, was able to utilize what they called revenue replacement, which meant we no longer had to pigeonhole the things that we were gonna use the money into the fairly specific categories that they said you could use it for. We could basically supplement the budget and use it for anything we wanted to, and that's, that's the way we did. That money went to, and I have some slides I can share with you, Councilman, that go over, we paid for the garbage carts and indirectly paid for some of the storm drain needs at the Parks Project and some other capital needs that the town had at the time.
So I get the hiring of staff, and I get the recovery money. Tell me one more question. Tell me about twenty twenty-four amended versus twenty twenty-four projection.
Okay, so the twenty twenty-four amended is the budget that is, you you've approved today. That's based on the projections we made last April and what we, that's the approved spending that we have. The projections, I go through every single line of the budget and look at where we are, what we've collected to date or what we've spent to date, and what the history of the town, I'll look back at the last four years. Say, we should spend over the next few months and make my best projection as to what, how that line will end up. A lot of that depends on, like, now we have a much better handle on, I'll pick on Ricky for a second, the the appeals that we knew we were facing last year for the Robin Hood Project and the Bluffs. We knew how much we had spent on a previous appeal, and we factored those dollars in, and that was a significant increase in their professional service requirement for that department. We're saving most of that money because it was for that purpose, and we didn't need to spend it. We we budget for the thirty-eight staff members, full-time staff members that are approved for the town. And if there's a position that's empty for six months, then there's savings in those salary and related benefit lines for that. We've got four vacancies in police right now.
So it's possible that this one million between amended and projection is sort of one-time savings? That's really what I was trying to get at.
It is, and it's unique to the circumstances around this fiscal year.
I wanted to make sure I understood one-time recovery.
Good question.
It is. So, yeah, you hope, we each year when we use a portion of fund balance to do some of the things that are needed and the board feels like they want to support for the fiscal year, we're hopeful that we'll be able to find some savings. We'll have some, we don't want to have empty positions, but, you know, you just know, in in running an organization this size, it will have a few. So we hope we'll we'll have enough savings to make up that and not have to use fund balance, which hopefully, that's where we'll end up this year. We'll see, but but yes, that's a one-time deal, it doesn't move forward. Any other questions about this so far?
Can we put it all on Red?
I wish. So fund balance, and and several of you have seen these slides before, but for the benefit of the new members, I just kind of wanted to go through our fund balance policy and why we talk so much about fund balance. Best practice says that, you know, you need to adopt a fund balance policy. And and fund balance is intended to be used for contingencies, unforeseen things that come up that we'll need to pay for. Creditworthiness, if you don't have any money in the bank and you want to borrow money to build a town hall or to support a Parks Project, you'll have a really difficult time of that if if they don't see that you have the ability to pay if circumstances were bad for a few months. Financing costs avoidance, investment income in years, the the years of COVID. And until last May, we basically had no interest income coming in because the Fed funds rate was zero, and it's been going up for the last year, and we have a pretty healthy interest. And we have a pretty healthy interest return this year for a change. The first few years, it was pretty dire. We were getting those $7 checks from the trust. And, you know, that today, I think we got a $30,000, $35,000 check for last month for the interest. That we keep as much of our money as we can in the trust. We transfer enough into our operating account to support payroll, the bills that we have at any given time. But most of it there earning as much interest as we can for the town. It supports cash flow. The expenditures required for the town are pretty linear. You know, salary's about the same each week. Other costs are pretty linear, but revenue does not come in in a linear fashion. We receive the bulk of our revenue in December, January, February, when the taxes are coming in. So we have to have a little bit of a nest egg to support operations and for cash flow purposes the rest of the year in the summer months. So those are the reasons that we want to have a healthy fund balance. And what is that? That's a different number. Some people say, well, the state statute says you have to have 8%. Well, sure, it does. If you're Bunkham County, 8% is awesome. That's many millions of dollars. If you're Woodfin, 8% is not enough money to support the town. So you're supposed to look at your peers, at other government organizations that are the same size, population, budget-wise, as the town and see what they're using as fund balance. And also look at your budget needs, what it would require you as far as cash flow and operations to sustain yourself for a reasonable period of time if the need arose. So the policy that Woodfin has, and it's consistent with most of the other municipalities our size in the state, is a 30% minimum fund balance, 50% is our target. And then in years that we approach or exceed 70%, the board needs to look for capital projects or programming needs for the citizenry. Yes?
You included the ordinance, the resolution from 2021. There's no mention of a target in that. Where does the target come from? The council voted for a 30% minimum and the 70% cap contribution back. Where's the 50% target? Is that just, we just?
Well, it's right in the middle. Yeah, it's.
I would encourage us to be careful that we're using that term loosely.
So you don't want to be at your minimum or hovering around your minimum because you don't have strict control over where you end up each year. You know, if the economy goes into recession and sales tax dollars go way down.
This would insinuate that we want to stay at 50, and that is not the case.
That's where we want to stay.
According to town ordinance?
Yeah. Yeah, best practice.
So that's not a function of similar municipalities? That is, you had mentioned that you look around similar municipalities, see what they're doing.
When we crafted this ordinance that set our fund balance policy, that's exactly what we did. We did an analysis and took all the fund balance policies we could find from other municipalities that were similar in size and operation. Now, some municipalities our size also have a water utility or an electric utility. So you have to consider those of similar operational needs.
You were here, but none of us were. Why wasn't that entered into the record?
I haven't read that in a day or two, Mayor. I'll have to look at that and see.
I'm just encouraging us to be careful with an artificial target that is not, that this council has not, or any council has not established. Beyond that, we can move on.
I think it was included in the staff report that's attached, to the best of my memory. But like I said, I'll look into that and give you an exact answer.
Thank you.
Later on, if that's okay. Yes, ma'am.
As to how we are earning money on this unrestricted fund balance, could you describe the limitations for how you can invest it? I'm thinking, I'm wondering if it's limited to banking instruments?
So state statute requires, there are some requirements.
North Carolina is very, very careful of what they.
There's a state statute that says it has to be a certain kind of bank that is regulated. And other than that, you have some latitude. A lot of larger organizations have a treasury department that will do some of their own investing. They'll buy commercial paper and different things. Smaller organizations that don't have a person dedicated to that, that can really spend the time to be, to make sound business decisions every single time. Because when you're a steward of taxpayers' money, you don't get to take chances with that money. Generally, put excess funds in the trust. There are a couple in the state of North Carolina that you can invest in. Woodfin uses the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, and they have an army of folks that are the top-rated, really in the country, from the research that I've done.
Would you share what, would you share what return you've gotten this the last year too? I think that'll help answer the question.
Yeah, if you look at the interest income, you'll see that, what was it, about $370,000 projected this year? They, on average for the last year, it's been about 5.5% interest on our money. So it's a very, better than you could just, most of us could do if we walked into our bank and opened an account and an interest-bearing account. This money is available upon demand, so I can call the trust and say, I need a wire for $1 million, and it'll be in our bank account in less than two hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that trust is what? It's a private, it's a public entity? It's a, is it a North Carolina something trust?
It is a North Carolina Capital Management Trust.
Is it a, I can look it up, but I thought you might know. Is it a private or public entity?
It's a quasi, Eric, you might have better terminology for me.
No, you can't put your checking account there.
Just learning.
Yes, only municipal customers, and it is highly regulated by the state and the LGC and about as safe as money can be without a professional money managing person with an investment background.
So they have their expenses, but they're not FDIC. They have their expenses that are figured into their interest rates, but it's not FDIC? It's, I'm speculating.
They, most of the funds are, well, not most, some of the funds are insured if they're in instruments that are FDIC-regulated. Some of them are in stocks, some of them are in, not stock, but mutual funds that are more secure, some commercial, some government bonds, commercial paper, varies. But, and I can send you some of their information.
No, you sketched it out for me.
What have you got, Shannon?
If you go on the school government, they should have some information on it. They did that on the training session. They talked about what kind of investments can be done. And North Carolina is like the top of the top as far as.
Let's see what Shannon came up with.
The North Carolina Capital Management Trust is an SEC-registered money market mutual fund operating under Code of the Districts, Rule 2A-7 of the Investment Company Act of 2024.
This is a money market.
Now, Councilwoman Cohen, they have a lot of information on their website about returns and investment strategy and the credentials of the folks that manage that money are the top of the top. And not just my opinion, but most folks' opinion. You'll recognize every name you see on that website. So I encourage you to look at it, and I'll be happy to send you some additional information if you're interested in that.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes.
Could you just summarize the disadvantages or perils of maintaining a fund balance that's over the recommended cap for any length of time?
Well, you know, sometimes government agencies do go over that if they're saving for a project. Like if we want to build a new town hall, but we don't want to borrow all the money and we want to save up, you know, $3, $4 million, $5 million towards that project for a temporary time, the board may say, we're going to deviate from policy for this purpose. And those savings will be restricted for a project three years from now or at some point in the future. And so on a general basis, you don't want to tax the, your constituents more than you need to operate the government. So if you're providing all the services that are necessary for the town and you're funding all the capital needs of the town and you still have excess fund balance, you want to reduce your tax rate so that you're relieving, you're reducing the burden on your taxpayers. And that's, that's kind of, you have to find a good balance between those two areas.
As a dashboard, it's kind of, it could be a sign that you, might be time to produce some taxes.
Yeah, so if you, if you're edging up to the cap on your policy for fund balance, you're either doing that because you're anticipating capital project needs in the future or new programs are going to be required to run parks or provide safety or security for the town or you would want to start considering a reduction in tax rate.
Do we need to do that through action since this resolution said that the town administrator, now town manager, would recommend that we either transfer it to capital funds or reduce revolving debt? Is that something we should be doing as a best practice now that ours is over 70?
We should have this conversation about fund balance. I'm going to get to some slides about that in a little bit.
Okay, good.
Each year, and the board should provide direction on, okay, we're at 70%. Do we have, you know, we'll talk about capital, we have some needs for the town that'll, that'll speak to that. So any other questions? Okay. Moving on, our fund balance is measured at the end of each fiscal year. So at the end of last fiscal year, the ending fund balance, and this, you'll see this in the audited financial statements that are posted online, $6,759,000. The restricted portion of fund balance, and that number is important and really hard for folks like me to estimate in the future because there's, there's some things in there that kind of hard to estimate. For us, this past year, we didn't have any Powell bill. You know, we, towns routinely save their Powell bill money for a few years till they have enough money to do a paving project and replace a few streets and things like we did. So we had some Powell bill reserves the year before, about $700,000. We spent all that on our, on our paving project. So there's none, no, no Powell bill reserves in our restricted fund balance. Unauthorized substance tax is money that is restricted for police use. There's a few dollars in there. Unexpended bond proceeds is a big number because we had just issued the second round of GO bonds, $1.5 million. Spent some of that on the project over the past year. And so we had a little over $1 million in unexpended bond proceeds. Once we begin construction and spend all that, you'll see the restricted fund balance on the, on those estimates that I put out go way down because you won't have that $1 million in there in the future. And then state stabilization. That is a formula that the state, it's dictated by statute. The LGC has a spreadsheet that we use with the auditors, and there's a number of different things in there. It's, for this town, it's usually $400,000 to $600,000. For this year, the amount ended up $593,000. So if you add those together, that's where you come up with the 1.6 million that is in restricted fund balance. That's, that's subtracted from your total fund balance. And the unrestricted fund balance is what's available to appropriate or spend. That's what we use to calculate our percentages on and apply against our fund balance policy. For 2023, that was 68.27%. This next slide shows a history of fund balance over the last five years. So we've been between 50 and 2022, ignore that. That was when we had all that ARPA money and we supplanted all the salaries for the whole year. So that number is misleading. That wasn't really, wasn't a real number, but that's the number. There's the 68.27% again in 2023. And we project our, if the numbers come out the way it looks like we're headed now to be at about 75% at the end of this fiscal year.
And I just, I want to say something. I'm not meaning to be a jerk, looking back at this 2021 ordinance, but can you imagine three years ago in the past, running this town without having a Sherry, without doing this exercise?
Yeah.
And paying no attention to ordinances and resolutions? So we were all, we were all very critical. So I want to, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to keep us on the, on the straight and narrow. Would you like the floor?
No.
Thank you. I'm just, in one way, complimenting the staff, especially Sherry, for absolutely outstanding work. Clean audits two years in a row. There are towns that have never had a clean audit ever in this state. So thank you.
So any question about this and the projected fund balance for this year?
Is there, would there be a reason to set up like a projected capital fund for the new town hall? The reason I'm asking that is because we are edging up north of the outer limit that we established. And at the same time, we know we've got this massive deferred expenditure item and just to.
We're getting there.
Yeah, and just to note an additional benefit. Yeah, to note an additional benefit, we're also in the position of needing to cover a pretty massive gap in the blue way, green way. And it, and it's misrepresented of the town's financial position to suggest that we're at 75% when we know that a significant amount of that's going to be eaten up. So if there's a separate line item to move it into, that's a specific question I'd be interested in hearing about.
I echo that. Thank you.
The answer is yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Good.
So the bottom line of this whole analysis is to provide what we think will be remaining as far as funds go after our core operations are paid for. And the revenue over/under expenditures, the last line in red is the same numbers at the end of the line item detail that I gave you, are those numbers. And this slide just puts that in context as to what that does to fund balance and what if we don't fund any other, if we don't fund parks or town halls or add any new employees or services that the town might provide, what the fund balance would look at. We all know that's not realistic, but the point of this whole exercise is to provide you with that information so you know what you have to work with when we start looking at the things that we know we need to do as a town and the services that we need to provide and the capital needs for the park and the town hall project. Well, another thing that affects our ability to fund some of those projects is debt. The town's outstanding debt summary is illustrated here. The first columns in gray over there are the totals that we have. Our projected debt service each year is in the middle column, and then the balance of our borrowed obligations are in the third column. The town relatively doesn't have a lot of debt. The BBMT, the second group of numbers, is the Public Works facility, and you'll see that'll be paid off in early 2026. The next, the First Horizon debt, is the first group of GO bonds that we sold to support the Parks project. There were two groups of bonds for the park, the First Horizon, and then the Pinnacle ones that we sold last year. The Truist Bank or the sanitation trucks, that was five-year debt, and it'll be gone in 2027. Home Trust Bank is the installment financing for some sanitation vehicles that, at the time, the rate was better than spending general fund dollars on it. So the smart decision was to finance that for a few years. Will be done with that last payment in 2028. And then the installment financing for the paving project, you see, was a 15-year amortization. That's on there. So this is the debt that we have. This is important to kind of have a handle on because as we go to, if we have other needs for town hall, for example, and we want to borrow a substantial amount of money to support that, we have to determine the town's debt capacity. That, the blocks up in the left-hand corner, so as of January 31st, we had $6,460,000 in outstanding. um, so a- as of January thirty-first, we had six million, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in outstanding debt. Um, the town's population in the last census was eight million, seventy, eight, eight thousand, seventy-two folks lived in Woodfin. It's probably a little bit higher now, but for the purposes of this calculation, um, that wound up to eight hundred dollars per capita in outstanding debt. Um, that's one of the calculations the state looks at when they approve whether or not we can borrow money for a town hall project, for example. Um, another calculation-
Debt per capita is?
Yes.
So that's a metric we should pay attention to?
It is.
Okay.
And it'll, I'll have this on this report every time we talk about debt.
And is that per capita and that total, um, are we high, low, average?
That's exactly the question the LGC asks when we go to borrow money. We're right in the middle currently, yeah. Um, they look at other municipalities that have eight to ten thousand folks and similar op-, similar operations and what their debt per-
Been in North Carolina?
Or person is.
On metrics, on metrics like that, do they have triggers where if a town was to go over a certain number, they would call you up and say, we need to talk about this?
They don't approve it to start with. So every time we borrow money as a town, we have to go before the local government commission, which is a, a wing of the treasury that, um, regulates borrowing for government entities. And, um, they look at our financial statement. They look to see if the auditors have written this up about various things. That's one reason you try your very best to have a clean audit because if they haven't deemed you on internal controls or some other, uh, financial management issue, then the LGC is usually more inclined to, um, allow you latitude if your numbers are a little higher or in certain areas.
Okay, good. It's good that we're learning this.
They look at your debt per capita. They look at your percentage of debt service to expenditures. That second box, um, you'll see that as a percentage of. Um, right now, we're at ten point six-one percent. They don't want you to go over about fifteen percent is the magic number of your overall budgeted expenditures. Um, and you know, that's a moving target. Every month, we pay a bill, we, you know, the circumstances, the budget may change a little. So that number is not going to always be, if you ask me six months from now, that number won't be six, ten point six-one, but it'll be close. Um, but that is a metric that they review and one of the benchmarks in whether or not we're healthy enough to, um, entertain future debt. So this is what the, the town has on the books today with, with one exception. Um, I mentioned the, um, the TIF debt, the tax increment financing that in 2008, um, when Reynolds Village, um, also called the downtown quarter financing district, um, the county and the, and I think we were only second or third person in the state to do this, um, approved tax increment financing to support the infrastructure development of that area. Um, the county pays a portion, we pay a portion of the debt service for that each year. That debt stream is, um, we, we have that obligation through 2037. Um, the, the county is in complete control of that. We pay a portion. And theoretically, the idea was, you know, we'll support this development as a town. Um, we think that the additional tax revenue by increasing our tax base will more than carry the debt service. Um, last year was the only year that was true, but, um, Yes.
Did the county, through that arrangement, retain any, any rights of oversight on them? Because your, that management company has changed yet again. I know we don't, it doesn't sound like we have any rights to question, but does the county?
Not, not from a management standpoint, they're just looking at the tax.
Okay, right, interesting.
Um, this debt has been refinanced by the county at least twice. Um, the last time, they didn't even talk to me about it. So I was like, oh, you did. Um, don't we need to sign some things? But, um,
That answers my question better.
Yeah. So, um, these numbers were provided by the finance department, uh, of the county last April. Um, the bottom set of numbers that are in bolder print are the, what you want to pay attention to. This is the estimate of what, um, we think the incremental tax will be and any subsidy required, that bottom line. And so last year, we, we paid three hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars back to the county in tax revenue. Um, in 2024, we haven't gotten our bill yet. And I spoke to the finance folks, um, last week, and they promised that they were going to get me that invoice as soon as possible. They were working on it, but I haven't seen it yet. So I don't know what our bill's going to be for this year, but, um, assuming their calculations last year were correct, it should be in the neighborhood of three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and we have that budgeted to support this payment. Um, this is budgeted in your, you'll see it in your line item budget every year. Um, I mean, every time, every month, when you receive the detail report right under admin, you'll see the two percent that we pay back and for tax collection fees, and then, and then this debt will be the next line item. So we, we budget for that every year. It's in your analysis, and all the numbers that we, um, presented in the five-year projection incorporate exactly these numbers here.
I'm going to, I'm going to play Mickey the Dunce here for a second. But what, is, was this financed as a variable rate or ballooning kind of thing? As it seems to keep going up every year?
The debt instrument has, like I said, changed a couple of times, and that's something we have zero control over. That ship has sailed, and, um, I wish we did, but, um, something that was agreed to back in 2008. And unfortunately, we're stuck with this presently unless they refinance and change it until 2037.
If you, if you want the history, you can Google and go back and look at the Woodfin Comprehensive Plan of nineteen eighty-seven.
Yeah, and I have a-
And that was going to be the town center and everything was going to move that direction, so.
What year did you just say?
Nineties. I said, I don't know that that's the right year.
Okay.
I did some research, and I found in the county archives a summary of this project.
It's fascinating.
Back from two thousand and, uh, ten or twelve. But it kind of summarized the costs and what was involved, and who made the decisions, and this and that. And it's a couple-page executive summary. I can send you all if you want to just kind of know more about.
It's really interesting.
Yeah, so I'll be happy to, um, let Shannon email that out with her next update.
But the, so the bottom line is that the, the instrument that we're using does continue to balloon over time, right now?
Yes.
What they've to go, right, okay.
I mean, part of the takeaway is, in, in a perfect world, a tax increment finance product will pencil out for a town. Like, you will, you will more than cover your taxes or your, your debt through the tax that you generate, and hopefully even generate more. But the Reynolds Village project never built out as originally envisioned. And so the infrastructure cost that went into the project, that's financed,
Wasn't advertised over the period, right.
Isn't enough, like, the, the debt for that, that the tax that is generated from the development that's there today is not enough to cover the debt.
And is that a sum of sales and property taxes?
Just property taxes.
So part of this problem was, is when it was designed and when it was imagined, those were owner-occupied condos and not apartments. But when 2008 hit and they no longer gave the loans for, um, like condos, but instead switched the direction, um, as far as banks were willing to give for apartments, that's where the problem came from. So if everything had worked with 2008 not happening and the, that, that, that crisis, then this would have-
I think the original plan also contemplated a bigger village. And so that also didn't get, due to the recession and, you know, that, that developer went into bankruptcy. It got sold to other parties, different kind of developments. And so not only did the, the, that sort of downtown vision not get realized, but then the, the tax.
The whole plan changed significantly. I remember, um, the Weaverville Highway was intended to be remat-, revamped to go up through the middle of the village.
Yep.
And it was going to basically create a downtown for Woodfin that, um, would be nice to have. And, and I, I think a lot of different changes affected the outcome of this. Um, a lot of things, what, what-
Isn't there a relic of that still existing? That is the street in Reynolds Village. What is it called?
North Merriman.
So, yeah, so, right, okay.
Yeah, so if, but if you look at the original plat for that development, um, Weaverville Highway was rerouted to go up right through that.
Yeah.
And, and to create more of a downtown atmosphere and-
So for me, there's two takeaways from this. One is be very careful with tax increment finance. And I don't think anybody's going to try to do a project like this. There's a reason why there aren't a lot of examples in the state. It's harder to do it successfully. When it is successful, it's wonderful, and it's hard to make it successful. The other is that we are obligated to about 2037. And if you remember that debt slide, we have other debt that cycles through 2037, 2038. So in a little over ten years, the town is going to be, I mean, we don't know what additional debt we're going to accrue, but, um, between now and then. But in 2038, the town moves into a, a much more fiscally, um, robust position, potentially. And so when we think about projects like the town hall, that might be financed thirty years out, you know, these things are important, so you just kind of want to think about the long-term projection.
Are, are things like this debt service committed, those would be in the restricted fund balance, I would take it? Items like that that we have to pay? No?
It's not per, per, yeah, not per balance, it's general fund.
Okay.
Not directly. So, um, the, the next thing on our agenda to talk about was, would be the town hall project. And don't laugh at my slide. I was attempting to illustrate all the things that we're-
It looks like a martini glass with olives.
It's a funnel. And it's all, all the balls that we're sort of juggling that affect the obligations of the town and our ability to move forward with this town hall project, um, a lot of them are still up in the air, and they haven't really funneled through, um, the, you know, final information so we know exactly what we have to deal with. Um, for, for example, the Blue Way, Green Way, you know, the bids came back, the original round of bids, different than we had anticipated. Our, our engineering estimates and economy and all sorts of things affected that. But, um, the second round of bids are, are due back in the near future, and we feel like, um, the April, May timeline, we, we'll have a much better handle on what the true costs for that project are going to be, what, um, we should have finalized a contract, a reimbursement contract with the county who serves as the pass-through agency for the TDA. And a significant portion of our funding, we hope to hear back on a major grant that, um, is looking pretty good, but it's a grant, so we, we won't know until that is, award decision is made in April. And all the things that affect that, that, um, I think this board agreed at our retreat that that's our primary responsibility to make sure that we're so far in that this park is completed and that we, um, are in a position to do that if necessary. Um, the economy, uncertainty around revenue estimates and, and expenditures affects that decision some. You know, the interest rates really shot up over the last year, which affects our ability to borrow, you know, money. If, if you look at the slide, a few slides back, I love this because if you look at the interest rates on each of these, 1.75%, 1.45%, we're not going to be doing that anytime soon. Um, 2.19%, 3.19%. Yeah, and, um, make, made much more sense to borrow larger amounts of money in an environment where we were paying very little interest. But as it creeps up to three, four, five, six percent, that really affects what we have to pay in, in payments and interest on that money. So the, the economy is, is something that we'll have to consider. And then, um, y- you know, because of all, all the uncertainty around these decisions, staff's recommendation is to sort of postpone this conversation for at least a few months. Um, and till we have a better handle on our responsibilities around the park and, and all that. I prepared a slide that, um, kind of goes through an estimated timeline, um, in, in our mind, 2024. So April to June of this year, we, we feel like we'll finalize the bids and know what our costs are for the project. We will have a reimbursement contract in place, hopefully with the county. Um, Adrienne and her team meet on a weekly basis with those folks, so everybody is, understands that it's a priority. And I feel like we'll have that done before the end of the fiscal year. Um, and then we'll have updated construction costs and know exactly, um, what our funding sources are and what, what our situation is as far as shortfall and phasing and, and all that. So a lot of those questions will be answered. Um, we will likely be able to begin work on, um, a design RFQ early next fiscal year and then issue the RFQ later in the year. We don't anticipate any budget impact with that part of it because staff will be able to, to draft the RFQ, and we won't have any costs until we start the, the design work and paying the, the selected person for that. In 2026, um, theoretically, if, um, things go well, we could, um, select the design, well, the design firm will be selected. We'll start that process, which we think will be, they told you fifteen percent, but I just don't see, um, it being fifteen percent of a project like this. We've already done the feasibility work, and a lot of the things it costs time and money for design firms to do, we've made those decisions about sites and size and that kind of stuff. Um, so we're anticipating about eight hundred thousand dollars in costs or ten percent of the overall project. Um, this is purely an assumption, but assuming we have about an eight-point-one-million-dollar project, that's five hundred dollars a foot for about a sixteen-thousand-square-foot building. Um, we would contribute under this analysis, and it can be lower than this number or double this number, whatever the board, you know, we'll have to have discussions about that. But for this, this analysis, um, I'm assuming about a 1.6-million-dollar general fund contribution, and then, um, issuing debt for six and a half million dollars to support the project. And I have a slide after this that shows how that would impact fund balance. Um, I think that'll be the next question on most people's mind. And then construction would begin in 2027. Um, and installment financing would fund the second part of that. Um, those kinds of financing usually have, uh, annual amortization with biannual interest payments. So you, if we finance it in the fall of 26, we'll have one interest payment that year, and we won't have a full debt service payment until 2028, fiscal year 28. Any questions about the timeline or anything anybody would like to see differently? Yes.
So, um, Reynolds Village, when it was envisioned, was going to be downtown Woodfin?
Mm-hmm.
And that is no longer-
Right.
In the, hence the town hall isn't going to be in downtown Woodfin. Right, okay, just getting the history right.
Okay, so, um, if we follow those assumptions illustrated in the last slide, um, the bottom portion of this slide shows how that would impact fund balance. So we'd have the eight hundred thousand in fiscal year 26 towards the development plans permitting, all that. And then an additional general fund contribution towards construction in 2027, our fund balance. And this, this, this is still assuming we have no other, uh, needs over our current operating status, no new employees, no contributions to the park, um, no other appeals that pop up that are very expensive or anything like that. Um, we would still have a healthy fund balance, seventy-seven percent. And then, uh, subsequent years would, it would continue to go up after that. So, um, we can support the estimated debt service. I think that we need to be conservative and postpone this, like I said, until we really know what, um, funding is required and for the park. And, but, but as it, in the way of analysis, it's food for thought. This is how this project could potentially map out.
Sherry mentioned that we have a grant that's pending right now that we should know in April. Um, we are also applying, uh, for another grant for Brooklyn County's Passive Recreation Fund. And we need to know the results of that sometime this summer, presumably. So we might have a much clearer picture this fall, winter. Um, so that's why we, we think, you know, we can just kind of hit the pause button on town hall now to know exactly what's going on with the park, and then, you know, then rerun the analysis then, so. We're still feeling pretty bullish that we can get the funding for the park or at least the large majority of the g- majority of the gap, get it covered. Um, but we just want to be conservative.
Any discussion about any of the items presented today for me, buddy?
I'd like to thank you for an excellent presentation.
Yeah.
I feel like I learned a lot.
It's great.
These slides are on the website under government, under your, on your page. Um, and if anybody has any questions, once you've really digested this information, please reach out to Shannon or myself anytime.
Quick question. I had been looking at the package you sent out on the Thursday before. At what point do you post the slides? Is it the same day? Because I should have been looking at these slides.
We post the slides, the slides on the day of the meeting.
The day of the meeting?
Yeah.
So we really can't prep in advance?
There's so much involved to getting the slides together and different parties involved and responsibility.
It was a question.
Like today, right after I said, okay, the slides are done, you can post them. The state comes out with the retirement numbers.
Exactly.
That's great. I could have put that in there.
We are, we are not done. Is there a need for a bio break or is everybody comfortable in the room?
Just a theoretical question. Um, can you envision a circumstance under which you would feel more comfortable taking some of the fund for the Greenway project? Using, using some of that?
Using fund balance for the Greenway project?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I mean, our preference would be, there's grant money available out in the, out in the world. And so our preference would be use that for help money as much as we can. Don't, don't have the Woodfin taxpayers be obligated. Um, and then save that money for other things.
A couple ways in Raleigh and things like that will happen.
Yeah. So I think, like I said, another six months or so, we'll have a better idea. We may very well have to end up using some of that fund balance money. We just don't.
Would the residents? I wasn't advocating it. I'm just curious under what circumstances.
I think when we exhaust, I mean, we have made an obligation to a number of different parties, including our, our community.
Yes.
That we will, that we will build this park. And so I, I think we do want to move forward and do the whole thing. So yeah, like I said, if you, depending on how successful we are with this additional fundraising, there could be a scenario where we do use some of that.
And since Woodfin residents are paying a tax increase already to fund this, that would be a, be a tough PR sell.
The other is this is a risky project. I mean, to, to do work like this in the river, we want to also hold some of that as a contingency in the event that there is some, you know, unexpected rain event or, you know, something unusual happens and we have to leave the cofferdam or, you know, things along those lines.
I'm glad Shannon said that because that, that's exactly true. I, I had not mentioned that in the presentation. We're going to get the bids back and we're going to say, they're going to say, this is what it's going to cost. But any project that stretches over several years, there will be unanticipated costs. We hope there are no major events like two hurricanes come back to back like happened here a few years back and, or anything like that. But if it does, Woodfin could be on the hook for that. And so we want to, we want to reserve a, a healthy portion of our fund balance until this project is complete and we get the CO and, yes.
And that's one reason you may want to be above that 70%, you know, for a period of time, just to, just to hold that.
Get this finished.
The, the project per form does include contingency. I mean, so we do have money in there for contingency, but it's, you just never know. You know, these projects are not common, so it's.
And before we leave this, everybody did hear, plain English, the town staff's recommendation is that we, we basically punt on Town Hall for a few months.
Right.
Until some of this starts out. Go on.
So um, forgive my ignorance, and if it's been explained at another time and I'm just blanking, I apologize. But I, since we're having this hiccup as far as money is concerned on the Taylor's part of the project, is it conceivable, like say they come back in, in two weeks or whenever they come back with the bids and we can't get a number that is um, we're comfortable with, um, could we split the project in two and go ahead with the, the Greenway part and then work on securing grants to help with that part?
That's more or less exactly what we're doing. So.
Okay, so I said, forgive my ignorance.
We posted a bid and then this new bid, so we're, we're abandoning the bids from the last go-round. And so we're, we're starting over basically. And in this new bid, we have a, what we're, what we're calling the base contract, which because now we have real numbers from real bid, only a month old or two months old, we now know real, we have a much better picture of what real costs are. So we're able to design that base contract to fit the budget that we have. So we have the money. We will have the money to cover that, that initial construction, which will cover the wave and about half of the park. It's the, that last half of the park, that construction sequencing would come later that we didn't have the funding for. So that's what we're pursuing funding for now. And in the new bid, we've broken that into four options. So as money becomes available, we add these options back into the contract. So we may come before council, say we get this Golden Leaf Grant in April, we get the good news, we will come back to you, council, to amend the budget in the contract to add that $1.1 million back in, and which will add options one, two, back into the project.
Okay, so, so the Taylor's part, is this me? My goodness. Um, which part is the first? Like, are we building the Greenway part? This is why I'm saying, forgive my ignorance on that.
So Woodfin County is actually the project managing the Greenway, and that's the last piece. That's going to come later. So that's actually not part of our project. It's not part of Riverside Park and the Wave, except for the little piece of Greenway that's in the park.
Okay, okay, that's where my confusion was. Okay, thank you.
And that will be funded separately.
Okay.
Has been requested we take a five-minute break. Can we do that and be strict about it?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Your turn for five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we, we do have a planning board meeting tonight.
All right, we'll zoom after a break. Community Grant Program, Shannon?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to try to keep this brief because I know we've got another meeting coming in here shortly. But council members who have been on council for a couple of years may recall about two years ago, we initiated a conversation about what to do with some surplus money that was the result of numerous years of donations that had more or less accumulated. Prior to 2022, the town's practice had been to administer that money to primarily for emergency aid purposes. There was also a senior program that was funded through those donations to the tune of about $6,000 a year. But most of that money went to people in need when they experienced sort of an unexpected hardship. But there wasn't a formal evaluation process for how that would be distributed, who would receive it, whether or not there were any checks that were necessary. So there was a desire on the council's part to develop a process where that money could be administered more fairly and equitably and transparently. So we developed this community grant program back in 2022. As I mentioned, it was initially funded through an accumulation of donations, and it emphasized consistency, equity, and transparency. We developed an application process. We posted an announcement. We contacted a lot of our community partners who met certain criteria and invited them to apply. At the time, we didn't know if this would be recurring or if it was a one-time program, but we invited them. So the program elements, just very briefly, municipal grants are very common. Two years ago, I shared a study that was done kind of identifying the percentage of municipalities that issued grants like this and what they were issued for. There's basically two criteria to initiate or to issue a grant. One is that it has to benefit the public, so it has to serve some sort of public purpose, and that it has to be applied to a service that the local government or the town would normally be authorized to provide. So that's like public safety, environmental services, parks and recreation, et cetera, economic development, things of this nature. You don't want to tread into territory of providing services that really are something that belongs or is the responsibility of another entity. So there's, not to pick on schools, but that's an easy thing to kind of point to. That falls squarely in the responsibility of the county. Things like public health programs squarely in the responsibility of the county. Doesn't mean that you can't do a program that is designed to have positive outcomes for the residents that affect health, but it should be something related to parks and recreation or community development, things of that nature. So we established three categories: education, neighborhood and community development, and human services. When I say education, I'm not talking about the North Carolina curriculum education. I'm talking about things that add value. So for instance, one of the grants that was issued was a small grant to Riverlink for their River Rats program, which is an experiential learning program where they would work with local school teachers and bring the kids out to the river and kind of introduce them, like literally introduce them into the river where they could look at aquatic species and have those kinds of valuable conversations. So that's an example of education. Neighborhood and community development might be things like the Woodfin Business Association or trying to think of other economic development type things. Human services, I think this is where our grant to ABCCM kind of falls in. This is assistance that is really targeting people of, you know, lower moderate income. And that program specifically through ABCCM is an emergency aid program that offers financial assistance for people experiencing, you know, a crisis event. The Woodfin Community Grant, you know, so those are things that we generally establish, like these are the categories that we're seeking grant recipients in. And then we also wanted these recipients to be a nonprofit or some other sort of established agency. So it shouldn't be just an individual saying, hey, if you give me this money, I'm going to go do these good things. It should be somebody who has some credibility, some stability in the community. It should at least primarily benefit the residents of Woodfin. So in some instances, our grants were specifically to be for the benefit of Woodfin residents, such as the ABCCM grant. But in other instances, we have smaller grants, say, for instance, to Catholic Charities as part of the manna food distribution, the Woodfin Community Market that's done every month. That was for the purpose of supplying non-food essentials, so things like diapers, other hygiene items. And in those instances, just given the nature of the market, we don't check residency for people coming into the market. So in that case, some of that might have been shared with individuals who weren't residents of Woodfin, but for the most part, we're looking to benefit the residents. And then we also require some level of reporting from our recipients. And again, depending on how much they received, what, you know, what the nature of their program was, the reporting is different. ABCCM actually provides some statistics, Catholic Charities as well. River Rats, it's more of a presentation on, you know, here's what it looked like for our kids to be in the river and, you know, what fun they were having, so.
Shannon, are you going to be asking for direction on whether to continue today? So the question I would have, and it's relevant to this reporting from recipients' point, I haven't seen any sort of update from ABCCM for...
They're coming in April.
Okay.
That will be their second update.
Okay. Would it be possible to delay any decision on whether to continue funding them until we actually have that data? Because to my mind, we need to be able to evaluate whether it's being administered in an equitable fashion before we make a funding decision for a year going forward.
So yeah, the answer is yes, we can make a final decision after that in April or after April. I think right now, we're mostly looking for direction in the council. Like right now, the 80,000 that we had budgeted for this year shows up in that five-year forecast that Sherry has provided.
You said 80,000?
80,000, yeah. And so generally speaking, I think we're just interested, is the council interested in trying to maintain this program? Are we done? Was it meant to be a one-time thing and we're done and we're just moving on? Do we want to scale it back, things of that nature, so?
I think for the smaller ones, my position would be that I don't have any heartburn about the $2,500, but I wouldn't even want to hazard an answer until I've looked at the actual data from the 50,000 recipient, $50,000 recipient.
Yeah, and for ABCCM, we did two $25,000 distributions. And so we're anticipating that they will report in April, that they've essentially exhausted or perhaps have already exhausted that second $25,000 distribution. With this week's update, I can go back and find the report, the reporting metrics from the first six months, and maybe I can recirculate that for you all so you can have the first six months and the second six months to compare.
Yeah, I just would want to be certain that the demographics of who's being served by that community actually match what we know the demographics of Woodfin would be.
This program initially was supported by donations from residents or business owners in Woodfin. We, before the last few years, received $18,000, $20,000, $25,000 a year in donations. The last, do you have that on the slide?
Yeah.
Shannon, it's way ahead of me. The last few years, the donations that we have brought in have been $3,000 or $4,000 a year. So not nearly enough to support that. So it would be a general fund contribution if the town chooses to continue with this program similar to what we're doing today.
Can I, because you said that it dropped off considerably. Was this an active, did you actively try to engage the donations?
We did.
Because in the past...
Yeah, we tried a couple of different strategies. My first year here, we did the same letter that Jerry did every year, and that was sent to places of worship and businesses. And received just a modest amount of money as a result of that solicitation. And then subsequent years, we thought, well, perhaps we need to kind of rethink this. It's really some of our, and where we had seen donations come really kind of came from residences, like particular, certain neighborhoods in particular. Maybe we need to target them. And so we kind of shifted the approach this last year, and we sent a solicitation to our neighborhood homeowners associations. Got some interesting feedback, at least from one neighborhood about that, that there is support for Woodfin, but they don't want to contribute to a third party. They'd rather be able to contribute directly to the entity. So we've spoken to ABCCM about establishing just, you know, the Woodfin Emergency Aid Fund, and people could donate directly to that, still applying the same criteria that the town had originally set out for them. And they are open to that, they're happy to do that. Now, whether that accomplishes what we think maybe it could accomplish, we don't know until we try, but that's kind of the history of that.
Chief, because a lot of that money used to come in at Christmas time, did it not?
Yes.
And that was an active program with y'all, right? You and then like the mayor, Mayor Vahan would like get people to give to the program? Or am I misremembering?
No, that's correct. So the program was letters, and then we had a liaison from the police department who would go and also talk to some businesses, and also coordinate the activities that we would use for the funds.
So the town used to also host this, like a Christmas party for Woodfin Elementary, and some of those funds were used for that. And that also had been sort of retooled over the last couple of years. There was a lot of duplicate effort, you know, different nonprofits were doing their own Christmas program. And then the school was doing something, and then Reynolds Community was doing something separate. And so we decided like we probably should get out of that. It's also something very difficult to administer effectively.
No, I got that part. I just, because you said there was such a large drop.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure, I was trying to figure out what the drop.
I can speak to that personally. My neighbors and I often, on Reynolds Mountain, often wrote checks to Woodfin Emergency Fund. But about two years ago, we started hearing that, well, there wasn't much of a process, it wasn't very transparent. It affected my check writing. I cannot write checks for...
So interestingly, two years...
That's the request for a directed donor approach now, instead of coming through the town, going directly to, say, ABCCM. That's kind of where we've been making it.
Yeah, and interestingly, two years ago is exactly when we tried to make it all transparent. So it's interesting that you report that two years ago is when you started hearing things, because that's when we were actually trying to turn it around.
Well, you know, there's a lack.
Yeah.
I wasn't hearing, oh, the town of Woodfin has created a program that will be more formal, more transparent, more accountable. We're talking about what was traditionally done at Christmas time.
Right.
And I can tell you that for a lot of my neighbors and I, when we heard, oh, you know, it was kind of loosey-goosey as far as how the money may or may not have been awarded. It was a real turnoff.
Yeah.
And on Reynolds Mountain, which has sort of adopted the elementary school, they have, as you pointed out, they have their own solicitation for, we have our own solicitation for funds to be used for Christmas presents, not for all parents and students, but for a subset that the school helps tell us are the most needy. So again, you wouldn't contribute, or again, to a similar fund for Woodfin when you had heard, oh, it's kind of loosey-goosey.
So maybe the third party is the better avenue.
Yeah, we hope that maybe that will encourage people to feel more comfortable donating if they donate directly to ABCCM. And then too, I think, how those, or the town, you know, it could be maybe a matching. I think at one point, there was a suggestion that this program could continue in a matching basis. So whatever gets donated directly to ABCCM, the town can match, you know. That's another possibility. But I will say, in the last two years, we've collected approximately a little over $7,000 in donations. We've had other donations, but they're, I'm not counting the ones that are specifically earmarked for, say, police. So we have had a few others.
So the question on the table is, do we want to continue this program using taxpayer dollars in likelihood, instead of...
Yeah, yeah.
If the donations come in, that we replace that?
Yeah.
That's really the question.
I think so. It's something that we'll need to continue to study and evaluate and discuss year after year. But it's a little hard to know now how successful, you know, this third-party option might be. So there might need to be just sort of a leap of faith in this first year, and then we might have some better data moving forward.
I'd add that if I personally received a solicitation from Woodfin for this type of program, I'd write a check. I don't know that I have received that solicitation.
Yeah, so in my update, I will also circulate the letter that was sent last year so you all can kind of see what, you know, how it got kind of retooled. And hopefully, that, you know, will help inform this conversation. But just to, let me just back up for a second. So as I mentioned, initial funding has run out or is close to running out. Fundraising efforts have yielded little. Future funding in the program would probably need to come from the general fund. So we have two kinds of donations. We have in-kind and then the monetary financial donations. The in-kind doesn't get a lot of attention, but I think it's important to point out that the town does subsidize other services, so specifically Woodfin Elementary through their annual 5K. We pay Woodfin staff overtime to manage the traffic for that 5K event. So that's our public works staff and our police staff, so that has a cost. Catholic charities and manna, it's the use of the community center. I don't really count that as much as a cost, because that's only a cost if we are losing rental income, and I think in most instances, we wouldn't be. There is an occasional cleaning fee, but it's usually not very significant. YMCA of Woodfin, they use our recreation fields in the community center for weekend sports and some summer camp programs. Mostly, it's the field, so there's some field maintenance and bathroom maintenance and things of that nature. But I just wanted to point that out, that we do support nonprofits. It's not always about writing a check, and here's three ways that we do that. The monetary donations, as I mentioned, ABCCM was the big recipient. It was the two $25,000 distributions in two different fiscal years. Catholic Charities received the one-time $6,000 donation, and then Riverlink for the River Rats program, $2,500. Yes, sir.
And that 58.5, that was money that built up over X number of years?
Yeah, I'm not sure how many years. I know like during the COVID years, there, you know, there was more accumulation.
And very little distribution.
Yeah, but it was...
It was one year where there was no distribution.
Yeah, but it was, but how many years, I don't know. And it's still, I don't think it was, you know, 10 years worth of accumulation. It was probably more like three or four years worth of accumulation.
Because that was another thing that was circulating in my neighborhood, that rumors that, well, not all the money is being dispersed. Again, that was a turnoff.
Yeah.
Now, I think these are excellent causes, but...
So 180, I mean, I think one thing that's important, you as ambassadors in our community, is to help share the news with others that the town, two years ago, did take these steps to be transparent, to be equitable, to have reporting, to, you know, accomplish all of these goals while doing good deeds in our community. Some other related commitments, it was part of the grant program. We made a commitment to ABCLT for $200,000. That was a $50,000 investment for, like, once a year for four years. The goal was for ABCLT to use that commitment from the town of Woodfin and leverage a matching fund with Buncombe County. Their application last year was unsuccessful, so they did not get that matching funds. They are interested in, you know, they would like to know that the town remains committed to an amount of, say, $200,000. If they were successful in finding property in the town and they could really use that money to leverage, you know, say, four units, they would like to be able to come to the town and ask for that commitment, but that is a decision of council, so that's just something I wanted to share.
What is that acronym?
Oh, Ashford-Buncombe Community Land Trust. Affordable Housing Organization, so they, and unlike others, they, or like some of what you kind of see in conditional zoning applications that are deed restricted for a period of time, this is affordable housing in perpetuity. So $200,000 match for a total of $400,000 at least two years ago would subsidize four affordable units in the town. So that's kind of the benchmark we were shooting for.
And the money is growing, right? It's staying in the bank and growing?
Well, if we don't use it at the end of the year, it goes back into the general fund. So if they came to us, you know, next year and said, oh, good news, we've got four units, we could use that money now, we would pull it out of the general, or the fund balance.
That is for the construction of those kinds of units, or...
It depends. It can be typically, it can be, it's typically construction or renovation of an existing unit.
Okay, but not for like rental assistance or something like that?
No.
No, no.
Shannon, can I ask, and I don't know if you know, well, I'm sure you know, never mind. I'm sorry. What is the administrative cost that's associated with, like, ABCCM?
I have to go back and look. I think it was three percent.
Three percent, it's small.
Three percent, that's small.
It's small.
Okay, that's really small.
Yeah.
And from somebody who's participated in all of those, I mean, what that $6,000 stretches to Catholic charities and diapers and toothbrushes, toothpaste products, you know, is incredible how far they stretch that money. And the stories we've heard thus far from ABCCM, it's guaranteed that it is Woodfin residents. Just the help that's been provided, that's something I hope we will continue to do.
And then another commitment that didn't come through the grant program was setting aside $10,000 to help support the development of the Woodfin Business Association. So that's currently...
And I think they are coming very shortly in regard to some portion of that, perhaps not all of that, but for the establishment of the website. Because they are up and running, bank account is open, the legal portion is completed. The only thing they are waiting on now is the final paperwork on the 501(c)(3).
So as I mentioned, these are kind of where we are. And yes, so the direction we were seeking today, we were hoping for is just to kind of, you know, try to gauge, is there interest in continuing this program? Sounds like there's interest, but...
We have a quorum, and that direction can be given.
Yeah.
I think it's just good, it's just good leadership.
It is.
I will say, you know, I'm working on this grant application, you know, and Woodfin's efforts to support low-income residents through emergency assistance, rental assistance, affordable housing, all of this is super helpful in that grant application.
Right.
So it helps to be able to say that the town, if you're not aware, parks, park investments are known gentrifiers of communities. So to be eligible for certain grant monies, when you're doing something that you know can gentrify a community, you want to be able to say, well, we're going to offset that through these other efforts. So establishing a community grant program such as this helps demonstrate that commitment. And so that's something that's very valuable.
So let's...
Can I ask a quick question?
Sir, please.
As I was unable to attend the business association meeting, I hope it went well.
We had 57 people there.
It was huge.
It was huge.
In other communities in which I've lived, the business association is a great source of voluntary contributions. Is that something, is it coming down the road, which might augment? I didn't see it up there.
We would hope.
But it's something to think about.
But historically, the businesses are the, were the bulk of the donations pre the high-end residency.
Yes.
Right.
Something to think about in terms of how that gets organized and people...
That's the assumption.
You could think of that as a return on investment, you know, the town supports development of the business association. That gets that organization in a strong, healthy place. And then there's an organized group that you can rely on.
So let's do a quick roll in terms of in general, giving direction to the staff to continue this using taxpayer dollars, councilman?
Aye.
Oh, I'd like to have a little more discussion.
We can.
Oh, okay.
I didn't realize you were moving to vote.
It wasn't clear.
I have a couple of comments.
You're correct, my apologies.
I'm uncomfortable with, I volunteer over at Veterans Restoration Quarters, but I'm a little uncomfortable with us picking and choosing which organization. Actually, I realize you have a...
We would do an application process.
You do have an application process.
We have an established application process. Sorry, I glossed over that. We established that in 2022. And that is something that we would, and you all would review those applications.
Yes, those would be specific to people that live in Woodfin, yes.
Yeah, now, you can make an exception, such as we did with Catholic Charities.
I was going to say that...
Kind of depends on the nature.
I want to retract that sentence, but I was going to say that personally, before jumping in to say, okay, we'll do an annual X number, 40, whatever it is, and I realize it's a small number. I don't know if an appropriate effort has been made. I know you sent out a solicitation perhaps two years ago.
This year, yeah. Well, at the end of December.
Every year for those...
Yeah, every year.
If an appropriate effort has been made to notify the community of the changes that you've just described, which is the first that I've heard about it, admittedly, I don't read all of my mail, sorry. I read a lot of it, but I get a ton of it. I don't know, I use the word appropriate intentionally, because, no, we're not going to plaster all of Woodfin with posters and stickers. But I don't know if an appropriate effort has been made to notify the community and the homeowners associations, businesses of this fundamental change in how this program was run, and whether or not such an effort would increase the donations, which to me, it becomes pass-through then, I guess, as opposed to us paying the bill. And I like, I understand the restrictions that you've made within residence, services that the city, the town rather, is involved in. I think those are all very reasonable. And maybe I just don't have a good sense of what municipalities of our size do.
We're not voting on a sum today.
I get the feeling what we're trying to decide is whether staff should move forward, and moving forward, what you're talking about would become part of...
I thought we were voting on it. No, I think... I thought we were voting on continuing general fund, X number of values.
Providing direction to staff to continue...
Never mind.
One person that a town agrees.
To continue building the budget, but this is a placeholder in it for now.
Yeah, it's just a lot of items.
Yeah, and just to kind of reiterate, currently, the budget and the projections include what we've been allocating, which is that $80,000. So that is factored into the budget right now, today, in the future five-year forecast.
That is all negotiable between now and the end of May.
I understand.
And communication strategy is something valuable. I will say, soliciting donations is not a typical municipal... I will say, soliciting donations is not a typical municipal staff responsibility. So asking staff to do that, like, this is something I am not accustomed to, this is not something that is typically done by staff, this is something that is usually done by committee, council members, leaders in the community, they do that, they help with that, developing that communication plan, et cetera. We're here to have the budget conversation about, does the town want to match it? Do you want to, how do you want to do this? How is the application process going to go? What are the important reporting metrics, things of that nature?
I appreciate that discussion.
If I can summarize, it sounds like you are getting support and direction to continue, although there are a couple of areas where we would do want to have some detailed discussion prior to final decisions being made on amounts. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Clear.
Okay, direction given? Thank you.
And that wraps us up.
Yay, team.
Here's the budget calendar, moving up our next, well, I'll turn it over to Sherry.
So we went over this, we didn't have this in front of us, but we have several more of these workshops, the first week of April and May, different topics of discussion, but they're geared to provide detailed information to the board about different financial matters that will be encompassed in the overall 2025 budget. Through each of these, we hope to gain some direction from this council on the direction that we're headed, and make sure that we're on the same page with your objectives. And so, that being said, our next budget workshop will be Tuesday, April 2nd.
We'll talk about tomorrow.
We'll talk about capital items, we'll go into more detail about the Blue Way, Green Way, streets, stormwater, and that sort of thing. So this calendar was attached to your packet, so you'll have that to review. I think you all were sent an invite, so most of these should already be on, all these should be, already be on your calendar.
The question was asked of me by a member of council, is there a hybrid attendance model? And I have told them no under the state law right now. It's either in-person or not at all.
This is considered a public meeting, and the open meeting laws that apply to your regular council meetings also apply to these meetings, so...
The law has not changed, okay.
Thank you for the invite part, that helps me manage my calendar. So I do appreciate that extra effort.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One quick note, with the note I passed to Shannon, the Woodfin Elementary School 5K celebration is Saturday, April 27. If it's not on your calendars, put it on your calendars, it's fun, it's going to be much bigger this year. Groups are actually buying tables to exhibit, like Woodfin Water, for example, so Shannon will get that on the town website, but I hope everybody can come, because it's generally a lot of fun.
It's fun.
It is a lot of fun. Are there other questions, discussions, but prior, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
You adjourn at 5:18 PM. Thank you.